Good evening. Welcome to the, to the commissioners, to the elected officials. And if you would, I have asked the commissioner Fendig to lead us in our intention.
And I'll turn on the mic, does that sound better? And Commissioner Tossenson to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
Heavenly Father, we lift our hearts, our eyes, and our hands to you in prayer for your love and wisdom over this cherished community and this family of citizens that we have and all that live and work and play in our area. Please protect us, guide us, give us a heart of character, of love and truth, that we can do your will throughout this community in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our public comment period tonight, first on our list is Mr. Julian Smith. If you'd come forward, please, sir, and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, I'm Julian Smith and I live on St. Simon's Island. Am I speaking loud enough for you?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. For the last seven years, I have come to meetings to beg you to plan realistically for hurricanes. I have spent thousands of dollars on public service announcements in our two local newspapers regarding your reliance on mandatory evacuation. Why do I do this? One of the reasons is because I helped recover and bury in mass graves some of the hundreds and hundreds of bodies of victims of Hurricane Audrey on the Gulf Coast of Louisiana in 1957 when I was in the Louisiana National Guard. What, when part of that large condo building collapsed in Surfside, Florida three weeks ago, and as Hurricane Elza approached, I decided to buy each one of you a condominium. That is, a copy of John D. McDonald's bestselling 1977 novel about a fictional community on the Gulf Coast of Florida that is devastated by the storm surge of the fictional Hurricane Ella. This novel explores a worst-case scenario that results from what the most thoughtful and knowledgeable character in the novel describes as, quote, "human optimism and strange tax advantages and too much time between hurricanes," unquote. It's been 123 years since the hurricane of 1898 that brought a 16-foot storm surge to downtown Brunswick and killed nearly 200 people that we know of. I hope each of you will accept a copy of this book tonight. I have them here. I know most of you don't have much time to read and that some of you don't take the time to read or understand most of the staff reports and other documents put in front of you. And I don't blame you for not wanting to read a novel about corrupt or incompetent elected officials, lazy building inspectors, greedy developers, builders, bankers, lawyers, realtors, and all of the others who prey on suckers who want to live at or near a beach. And that was back in 1977 before we were aware of the consequences of global warming. I don't blame you for not wanting to read or even accept a novel in which a causeway to the mainland washes out, where a row of high-rise condos collapse with many of their occupants inside, where families drown in their trapped cars or in their single-story bungalows, and where the survivors discover there is no way to afford to fix or replace the roads, bridges, sewer, and water infrastructure. But I'm giving you the opportunity to accept a copy of condominium. If you don't want to read your copy, give it to a friend or a relative or your minister, someone who likes to read. If you don't want to accept your copy, I will be happy to donate it to the St. Simon's Library in your honor. Let me end with this little bit of information. One of the tropical storms of hurricanes this season is named Julian. Let us hope he doesn't come here for a visit with his namesake. Thank you for listening. And let me let the staff up there know that my sound system is not working. I need something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And here they are, if you want them.
Thank you, sir. Next on our public speaking list tonight is Ms. Laura Carana. If you'd come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Laura Carana and I live on St. Simon's. And I'd like to speak to you about the process of hiring our next county manager. I'd like to start by summarizing a timeline of this process so far based on information that A Better Glenn and others have gathered through open records requests and media reports. On February 18th, Allen Ors handed in his resignation as county manager, giving six months' notice, which would take him through August. On April 1st, you terminated Ors' contract early while still agreeing to pay him through August. That same day, you signed a contract with the Mercer Group to conduct a search for a new county manager. Sometime in April, some of you proactively approached our tax commissioner, Jeff Chapman, about taking the job. Applications started to roll in with Tanya Miller submitting her letter of intent and CV on May 13th, and Lalee Shavon submitting hers on May 16th, and I'm assuming that Mercer probably received several other applications from people who haven't been named publicly. And May 19th was the application deadline advertised by Mercer. On June 9th, three weeks after the deadline, Jeff Chapman submitted this, a one-page letter of intent, no CV, to Wayne Neal, not to the Mercer Group. And eight days after that, this board decided that that was enough to merit hiring someone at $180,000 a year salary, and Mr. Tossenson moved to name Mr. Chapman as the sole finalist for county manager. That vote narrowly failed because Mr. Fendig abstained. Two weeks later, a vote to name Mr. Chapman, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Vaughn as the three finalists failed, and then a vote to name Mr. Chapman as the sole finalist passed, with Neal, Tossenson, Raffalsky, and Fendig voting in favor. Which brings us to this week. On Tuesday, as you know, Mr. Chapman did us all a favor and withdrew his name from consideration for the position, leaving us back at square one with a few wasted months and a few thousand wasted taxpayer dollars under our belt from a candidate search that yielded several interested, viable, qualified candidates that I'm not sure we can even consider candidates anymore because they were basically snubbed by some members of this board. I know I wouldn't want to work for anybody who handled my interview process the way that this board did. So let me tell you what this looks like from the outside. It looks like you knew what you wanted all along and you pursued that, while you also hired Mercer Group at the same time to conduct a candidate search that was pointless and wasteful because your decision had already been made as early as April. And you're now tasked again with the same job you've had since February to hire a new county manager. So as you're restarting the hiring process, please hear me when I say, the citizens of Glen County are not interested in the appearance of transparency, or the appearance of professionalism, or the appearance of accountability. We actually expect you to show us those behaviors. We also suggest that you find a way to get in touch with your constituents so that your decisions line up with our concerns and priorities. To put it another way, it's in your best interest to listen to us. Let me give you just a few recent examples. When you asked us to vote on a SPOLOSS project list that was created without formal input from us and required us to turn out to the polls for the fourth time in nine months, that referendum failed. On the other hand, when you listened to us during the police chief search and adjusted your strategy to include Noble in the search, that succeeded in bringing to this county a nationally-vetted, well-qualified, and experienced chief of police. When you took it upon yourselves to pursue and handpick a county manager candidate who didn't apply for the job and didn't meet the minimum job requirements, there was public outcry at this blatant example of cronyism, and that endeavor failed. It is in your best interest to listen to us. And if my words are causing you to feel defensive, or if you're thinking that I just don't know how things work here, I think that recent evidence clearly proves otherwise. Regardless of how things have worked in the past, this is exactly how it works now and how it should work. And I just want to clarify that this should not be a power struggle. There's no question where the power lies in this county. On the county organizational chart, there is one square at the very top of the chart, and it reads electorate of Glen County. That is where the power sits. And as the electorate, we're doing our part and are trying to be good partners with you by being involved and engaged and openly communicating to you our priorities and expectations that you act according to what's best for everyone in our county, not just those with money or connections. You need to be a good partner, too, and you can do that by hiring a county manager who meets the job requirements, who has been appropriately and thoroughly vetted, and has the qualifications and experience to do the job well, even if she's a woman, even if she's not a political insider, even if she doesn't owe you any favors or vice versa. You have a second chance now to do this the right way, and we're looking forward to you doing just that, for the sake of the county that we all love. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me. Wait, wait, just one moment, ma'am. Tell me your name again.
My name's Laura Carana.
And you are speaking for all of Glen County, the way you're presenting yourself?
I'm a part of A Better Glenn, which is a-
So you're the spokesman for A Better Glenn?
I'm not the spokeswoman. I am a member of A Better Glenn.
Are you speaking for A Better Glenn?
I'm speaking on behalf of A Better Glenn and Women's Voices of Glen County.
So you're their spokesman?
We don't have a formal spokesperson, no.
So then you are that person.
I'm acting in that capacity right now, yes.
Well, you know, you're saying things that are a lot of untruths. You know, there are no requirements for that position in writing. There are no state requirements of how to go about choosing a county manager. And you're assuming that you have the right criteria, which there is none.
I have seen the posted job requirements that you provided to Mercer Group.
That's right. And also-
So what would you call those?
And you're thinking everything should formulate around the Mercer Group. They were just one search engine, but we're-
They were the ones that you hired to do a job.
And we have a right as commissioners, if we see a candidate that we think would be able to fill that position, we have the right as commissioners and representing our districts-
And how did that work out for you?
-to be able to bring them forward. And that's what we did. And I don't see where that's a problem. Undoubtedly, it's a problem for you, but I just don't see where that is a problem.
It's a problem for us because we still don't have a county manager.
No, we don't. But we're still looking. And we're still searching. We want the best county manager that we can possibly get for Glen County. And, you know, it takes seven of us to make that happen. But the criticism that you put forth doesn't seem to help the matter in any way. It's just, you just don't like the way we're doing it. And if you don't- and I've been up here for six months now, and I have, all I've heard from what you stand at the podium and say is criticism. You offer really no good-
I only get four opportunities to speak during the public comment period, so I use those wisely.
Well, then, why don't you make, construct criticisms? I mean, in your opinion, are we doing anything right?
You hired the Mercer Group. I think it's a great idea to hire a professional hiring search firm to look for candidates. And when they provided you with candidates, I think it's a good idea to take those seriously.
In your opinion, we should have, we should have just picked from what they brought us.
Why did you hire them if you weren't going to consider the candidates that they brought forth?
Well, it was one particular search engine. We may choose another one the next go-around. I don't know.
And will you listen to them?
Excuse me?
Will you listen to the candidates or consider, seriously consider the candidates that they bring forth?
We listen to the Mercer Group. We just didn't, we just did not consider the candidates that they brought forth.
Okay, and that did not work out? That's what my point is.
Well, that's right. So we're still looking. They, we didn't feel like that they were a good enough candidate to represent and work for Glen County.
Do you plan to approach any of the candidates that they brought forward to take the position?
We have rejected those candidates at this particular point.
So what's your plan going forward?
We'll continue to look.
How?
It's time to cut this off. Thank you, Ms. Carana.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Melissa Bullard. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Melissa Bullard. All right. Good evening, commissioners. I apologize if I speak fast, but I'm here to speak on a big subject in five minutes that not only involves my family, but many other families that are too scared to come forward out of fear of retaliation like I have endured. I'm here to ask y'all to appoint the positions of the housing inspectors. As it states in the Georgia Tenant Landlaw Handbook, Georgia state law dictates that local housing code development can inspect for violations even on private property, as y'all call it. Even code enforcement acknowledges this position does exist, but we do not have that, anyone in our place in this county. Either that or y'all to pass an ordinance for the mainland landlords, similar to the one y'all have put in place for the island landlords. All homes should be habitable and safe and at least meet Section 8 standards or the HUD qualifications. When we rent, we are asked for a security deposit. I've seen homes that have went many years without repairs or improvements, but the prices rise. Think about it, if all of Glen County homes were brought up to code, what a beautiful county we would have. There are homes just left to rot, abandoned homes. We have families living in uninhabitable conditions, in hotels, and even in tents. There is not one shelter here for any family with children unless you're under domestic violence. If something was to be done to improve the housing, many of these families would have a place to call home. I would rather place, have a place to call home, I'm sorry. I would rather see the extra money from the budget put into our housing shortage than into parks. A child needs a safe, habitable place to sleep more than a playground. Also, to answer your question, why did I move in? And to answer other questions of why do others move in? What choice do we have? Because that's all that we have here until some changes are made. I was told the reason the island gets their ordinance is because that's where y'all get y'all's revenue. Well, these mainlanders go to work on the island and here and fill the position to cater to the islanders. I'm not trying to be one-sided. Everyone must do their part. Code enforcement, landlords, and tenants, hold tenants accountable. Do inspections. Y'all asked for our help to vote you in, and we did. Now we need your help. If you would live, if you wouldn't live in them, then why should we? Y'all took your oath, so now to fulfill it. Right is right and wrong is wrong. Also, just to, you know, clarify some things. There's hundreds of people on Facebook begging for places. Anyone know of anything, anything? It's not just about affordable housing. It's about housing, period. We don't have enough. People moved here during COVID. They didn't leave. We have, we just don't have enough. There's nothing. I know people personally having to leave here because they can't find anything. Another thing, we need to revisit what happened with New Hope, okay? Like a gentleman got up here and spoke, said 12 to 18 months. From what I'm understanding, the tenants are telling me that their homes are too old to be moved, and they have to be out by August 31st. So a single mom with three kids working a job will no longer own her mobile home, and it will be left there to be demolished, and nothing is being offered to her in return. So again, more people displaced. So then therefore, we have all these displaced people, nowhere to go. How do we have a county with no shelter for families with children? What do we do? How do we end up that way? This is the United States of America, and we shouldn't be living in like some third world or just having these landlords have all this control when we ask for repairs to ask us to leave. How long do we need to go without a refrigerator? How long do we need to go without a stove? We have children to cook to provide for. Then, the homes generate revenue. Why can they not be considered a business? But I have spoke to Pamela Thompson and I've spoke to Catherine Downs, and there is a position. In other counties, they have it, where they can actually go in the home and inspect and make sure fire codes are up to code so we don't have anybody losing their homes. And think about it from a budget standpoint. When you have these landlords doing their job, the code enforcement doing their job, the tenants doing their job, you don't have other people having to contribute to, you know, charities to help these families out, to help pay these power bills and everything else when everything is weatherized and done correctly. What's the point in putting the deposits down if they don't use them to improve the homes when they keep them? And, but, that's it. I'm sorry, I'm not well vocabulary like the rest of them, but I, you know, I appreciate y'all listening. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like for the staff to follow up on the New Hope, to find out, to make sure if the speaker makes a lot of very good points, and in particular, New Hope, that maybe something we can do immediately about that if that's the case.
Thank you, Ms. Bullard.
That's it.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Next, I would like to read a resolution thanking the Georgia Association of Chief Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, and the Initiative for their assistance in the search for the Glen County Police Chief. Bear with me, this is lengthy. Whereas the Glen County Board of Commissioners have utilized the services of the Georgia Association of Chief of Police, GACP, and the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, Noble, and the Initiative for the Search for the new Glen County Chief of Police. And whereas the Glen County Board of Commissioners, here and after referred to as the Board of Commissioners, recognizes GACP as the largest professional association of law enforcement administrators in Georgia, and one of the largest in the country, whose goals are to promote cooperative, professional relationships throughout the state, to evaluate the standards of police institutions and the profession, to offer quality training and continuing education for administrators, and to provide opportunities for police executives to exchange information and experiences. And whereas the Board of Commissioner recognizes Noble as a highly competent public service organization that is at the forefront of providing solutions to law enforcement issues and concerns, whose goal is to ensure equity in the administration of justice and the provision of public service to all communities, and to serve as the conscience of law enforcement by being committed to justice in action. And whereas the Board of Commissioners recognize the Initiative Advancing the Blue and Black Partnership, an organization whose goal is to create scalable solutions that enable community stakeholders to better engage with each other to create systemic change in policing practices. And whereas the Board of Commissioners seeks to ensure that all its citizens are served in a professional, ethical, and equitable manner that respects individuals, protects the democratic ideals and system of government, pursues greater accountability of police, greater public share in decision-making, and greater concern for civil rights and liberties. And whereas the Board of Commissioners utilize the services of GACP, Noble, and the Initiative as knowledgeable law enforcement organizations with decades of experience within Georgia and across the United States. Whereas the Board of Commissioners received qualified professional input on candidates from GACP, Noble, and the Initiative in the search for a Chief of Police. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has unanimously chosen Jacques Batey as Glen County Chief of Police with set input from GACP, Noble, and of the Initiative. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes, commends, and extends the sincerest and most profound gratitude to GACP, Noble, and the Initiative. In witness thereof, I set my hand this 15th day of July 2021. So, thank you. We thank the GACP, Noble, and the Initiative for all the work they did in bringing forth our new Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to update the agenda and propose a motion to defer items from the agenda. And the first one would be Item 2, to defer Item 2 to the August 5th meeting regarding the appeal of the Board of Appeals' decision in case number ZV4708, 808 Ash Street, St. Simon's Island variance. And Item Number 8, to defer Item Number 8 to the August 5th meeting regarding the request for conditional use permit 4618, St. Simon's Coast Cottage Dune crossover conditional use permit. Item Number 22, move to defer Item 22 to the August 19th meeting regarding the intergovernmental rental agreement with the State Properties Commission. And also defer Item Number 52 until further notice regarding an amendment to the Code of Ordinances to ban the use of polystyrene foam coolers on the beaches of St. Simon's
We have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, and a second by Commissioner Booker, to defer Items 2, 8, 22, and 52. Any discussion?
I know that the commissioners have received a lot of email concerning the polystyrene foam coolers on the beaches. I think it's a good example of the commission willing to step back and listen a little more and decipher through a wide variety of materials that could or may need to be included in this or not at this time. So the purpose of that is to continue the discussion and research on what we should implement. So I just want to let people know that's why we're stepping back and kind of review all the suggestions that have come to us, and I know we've gotten a lot of emails. We thank the community for that.
All right, sir, any other comment?
Mr. Chairman, just one. Ms. Buck, would you stand up? Is it, is it Melissa?
Mackenzie.
Mackenzie, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mackenzie is the valedictorian at Brunswick High, and she has done, she has done an honorous amount of work on this ordinance and her presentation to the, our work session was most impressive. And it's no wonder that Mackenzie is selected, the University of Georgia Institute of Higher Learning, to be a student there this fall. And Mackenzie, congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you as you go forward. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's what pirates do.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise a right hand. All right, the motions to defer have passed.
Mr. Chairman, add items to the agenda. Item 16.1, a move to add Item 16.1 to the consent agenda to approve the contract for cyber insurance in the amount of $3 million with a $75,000 retention at an estimated annual premium of $32,156 effective August 1, 2021, with funding to come from the general fund. And also add number, Item Number 54 to the agenda to approve an agreement from the film Netflix pieces of her in St. Simon's Island. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker. Is there any discussion on the items to be added? I see none, hear none. All in favor, please raise a right hand, and that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, while I'm on a roll, because of the length of the agenda on the public hearing items, I would move to move consent agenda, general business and consent of general finance, I think, up to the first item, if that's approved by the board.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker, to move all consent items to the top of the list. And that would be, any discussion on that? The motion and the second is to move those items up on the agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve consent agenda, general business, and finance, with the exception of any item that a commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker, to approve the consent agenda for general business and finance, except for any motion, any item wishing to be pulled. Do we have any? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, and then to find out where we are. The, we will now go to our public hearings. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious, should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. You notice that our staff is leaving early. Congratulations. We'll hold out the fort. Number three is to receive citizens' comments regarding the changes to certain fees at Blythe Island Regional Park, and consider approving the recommended fee changes at Blythe Island Regional Park, as outlined in Attachment A with the effective date of September 1, 2021, Ms. Gargans.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having me tonight. This is a public hearing item. The Blythe Island Regional Park Advisory Board has been meeting for several months and has been reviewing the fees based on some recommendations that came about in 2020 by the Revenue Study Committee. They unanimously approved recommending to you to hold a public hearing to change certain fees at the park. The Board of Commissioners approved advertising the public hearing at their meeting on July 3rd, and the public hearing was advertised in the Brunswick News on July 1st. And so here we are tonight with the public hearing item. And I have a PowerPoint.
And while they're pulling that up, if there were any in the audience that had items on the consent agenda that would like to go ahead and leave, well, we certainly understand, and thank you for being here.
If the presentation is not there, hopefully in your packet you have a list that we could go through pretty quickly. So I apologize, I don't know where the presentation went, but-
The dog ate the homework, I think.
The dog ate the homework. We're recreation parks, we just roll with it, so it's fine. So if you have Attachment A that was attached to the agenda report, I'll just kind of try to touch on these very briefly. So the, because of maintenance costs and the cost of operations of running Blythe Island Regional Park, the Blythe Island Board recommended making some changes, increases to fees with the campsites. So the first change is RV lake sites, 1 through 13, those are the ones that do face the lake, and the proposed increase is $5 per night, so taking it from $40 a night to $45 per night for one night's stay, and then incrementally adjusting as you go through the week. The seven-night stay, they proposed changing from $225 to $270. So basically, every night is, would be $45 instead of 40. And then the, what we do is already in place, is the, you get six nights for $270, but if you do, if you stay a seventh night, that seventh night is free. So that's what the range is on that one. RV sites 14 through 97, these are all, most of these are, they're 50 or 30 amp sites, some are multiple sites like that, some are pull-throughs, they're all full hookups, they include Wi-Fi, sewer, water, electricity, cable, all those things. The recommendation from the Park Advisory Board was to increase that per night at a rate of $2. So instead of $40 per night, those sites would then become $42 per night. And again, the same theory of the seventh night would be free. So on the, on the second chart, when you see going for the six-night fee and the seven-night fee the same, that is because we've historically given the seventh night free. The monthly rate that is proposed is taking it from $600 a month for a rental to $675. And please let me just add, too, that these fees do not include the taxes that are associated with these rentals. Those are in addition to this. So these are the, would be the base fees. The Park Advisory Board did not recommend any changes in the fees for the primitives campsites, so those were recommended to stay the same. Under the final table on your sheet, where it says, that's something that applies to all campsites, the late checkout fee was proposed to be increased from $15 to $25. The monthly late fee increased from $50 to $65. And the dump fee that RVs use changed from $5 to $10. The remaining fees on the bottom table were not recommended for any changes. On page two of your Attachment A, there are several fees, they are in bold, that were recommended to be changed. And that includes pine at 15 pieces, which we do sell wood on-site, we chop it and sell it on-site and deliver it to campsites, from $8 for 15 pieces to $10 for 15 pieces. Oak, 20 pieces, would be going from $13 to $15. A bag of ice for 10 pound would be $226 to $3. 20-pound bag would be from $467 to $5. And then the remaining merchandise, Lake Cindy and Pavilion-related fees would stay the same as they are currently. Regarding the marina fees, the current launch fees for vessels that are 22 feet and under is $11. The proposed increase is to $15. The current launch fee for vessels 23 foot and over is $13, and the proposed change would be to $17. And no change on the overnight docking fee. Okay, good, you got that up there. So those were the fees that were recommended, again, by the Park Advisory Board, after looking at the recommendations of the Revenue Study Committee. They, the Advisory Board also supports continuing the restrictions on consecutive monthly rentals between May and September to allow more weekly and daily rentals during peak season. And as I said, the fees help offset the operational costs associated with utilities, cable, Wi-Fi, repairs, maintenance, et cetera. And the Blythe Island Park Regional, Regional Park fees were last increased in July of 2019. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Gargans.
And there's the presentation.
Commissioners, anything before we open? Comments to the public? All right, this is a public hearing, and it's a public comment period. So anyone wishing to make a comment regarding the fees at Blythe Island Regional Park, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
I have a question. The proposed fees, and she says this for improvements, what is it being used for? And also, like, I would like to know why that park doesn't allow, like, long-term stays? Because that would help with the housing? Because there's many people that don't have places to go. Because, believe me, I had a fifth will, I tried to come out there, believe me. I did.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to know what the extra money's for, and why we don't allow that? And there's plenty of space out there that could help.
Ms. Gargans, do you want to address that?
Thanks for those questions. So with regards to the stays, between the months of October through April, someone can stay at the park for a period of six months if they want to, and that is the longest period of time that we allow folks to stay there. But with regards to the consecutive monthlies during the peak season of May to September, someone could come and stay for a 30-day period, but they would have to vacate for a 30-day period, and then they could come back for a 30-day period. They could possibly also look into a weekly rental option in those, in that peak season if they had already expired their first 30-day period and wanted to continue for another week or two or three. That, the six-month stay prior to the fee increases back in January of 19, the six-month stay was allowed, and then somebody had to completely vacate the park for a complete day, 24-hour period, and then they were allowed to come back to those, to those monthly sites. We don't have, out of the 97 RV sites, we have, I think we may have about 25 to 30% of those set aside for monthly rentals for, during the non-peak period of time. But obviously, during the peak season, we have a lot of guests that come and want to stay for a week or weekends, holidays, and so we do make that adjustment for those folks. With regards to improvements at the park, I know a lot of, a lot of money has been put into the park over, over the last five, well, last four years that I've been here for a variety of things, and then there are definitely plans for future improvements to the park. We are currently looking at some things that were just approved on the consent agenda related to park improvements. We just purchased a new boat hoist at the park. We are looking for, to remake some electrical repairs in the campground, that we are not certain what that cost is going to be, but we feel like it's going to be pretty costly. The fees that we pay to Comcast for our cable and Wi-Fi service continues to increase. Water, sewer fees, those things keep going up, too. water, sewer fees, those things keep going up too. So we recently put some new posts in the campground that were some nice reflective signs. We have fire rings and concrete pads at all of our campsites, and I feel like we keep up the park pretty well. So the things that...the increased fees will just help go back into helping to make the park continue to be a shining hidden gem, that we call it, up there at Blythe Island.
Okay, and this is coming with the consent of the Blythe Island Regional Board of...
Yes, sir. They...they looked at the fees at three different times during the past several months, and these are the fees that they would recommend that you consider.
Okay. We're still in a public hearing, are there any other public comments about the fee structure at Blythe Island Regional Park?
It's a public hearing, Mr. Garganus, it's a public hearing.
It's a...it's a received public comments is how I'm reading the...Mr. Smith, thank you. So, any other comments during this hearing, Mr. Smith? Any other comments? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period to this hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. So if you have any questions about anything, I'm certainly here to answer those questions, and if you choose to take any action this evening, we have a recommended motion on the screen for you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we approve the change in the fees of Blythe Island Regional Park as presented with the effective date of Jan...of September 1, 2021.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky. Any other discussion on this matter? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is for alcoholic beverage license. Consider the issuance of a 2021 alcoholic beverage license to William H. Christensen for Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, Inc., DBA Cracker Barrel, number 54, 211 Warren Mason Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wine for consumption on premise of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. William H. Christensen licensee. And... Yes, sir.
Chief, Mr. Christians...or, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman and the Board, Mr. Christensen is present and meets the requirements for the ordinance for the issuance of licenses for alcohol.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any comments by the Board before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing, all those that would speak in opposition to this alcoholic beverage, please come forward and state your name.
I didn't quite understand what he got up here and said, could you repeat that?
Yes, sir.
Is he speaking on behalf of the license?
He is speaking for the Police Department, saying that he has met the criteria.
Okay, I understand. Sheldon Chapman, a member of Glen County for most of my life. I wanted to contact all of you Commissioners today, but I couldn't get your numbers, they couldn't find them when I called the 554s, but I did send Mr. Tosterson an email, did you get that? And this lady over here, Molly Rhonda, nice to see you, thank you for doing that for me. I asked him to vote no on permitting this license. We've got enough beer drinking, beer selling, and malt drinking and everything else in Glen County, it's really a plague. There was one Commissioner many years ago, Bobby Owens, Sheriff Owen, Mitch Owens' son, he let it be known when he ran for the county commission, I will vote no on every beer license or liquor license that comes through the process of the commission. I like that kind of character and a Christian man, and he was a Christian, he lived up to his word. So I think on behalf of the Bible-believing people and the religious people in this county, that all you Commissioners could unanimously, or either four to three, vote against it. Let them come with you with a lawyer, say no. You know that we have a drinking problem in Glen County, St. Simon, Sea Island, Jekyll Island, football games when people come in to have their big shindig. I know Cap Fendig doesn't like all that goes on with the beer and the beer cans and the cleanup, the cussing and the mugging, and I don't like it either, and if you know anything about morality, you shouldn't like it. Well, I'm not here to preach to you, I'm here to oppose this beer license. I talked to Mr. Christensen yesterday, he says, "I don't like it, my people don't like it, but up and down Florida, they've got it in a lot of the restaurants." But I said, "Well, let it be known to your company in Tennessee that your people don't like it." See, you've disturbed the whole workforce, people that make a good living and a decent living and serve you and me by saying, but to let it be known, they don't like it. You've made barmaids and saloon keepers out of a good eating place. I eat there quite a bit, and I eat there because I don't like to eat where beer is floating, now you can sell it on Sunday, says Sunday sales, isn't that amazing? There's a group of people in Glen County, religious people, that they've gotten together and started praying for revival in Glen County. Are you familiar with that? I hope you are, you're included. How are we gonna have revival if we don't condemn sin? Drinking beer of any kind or liquor of any kind is a sin. Sin is a reproach to God Almighty. The first time that liquor shows up in the Bible is in Genesis, chapter nine. Noah got drunk on the wine from his vineyard, and God put a curse on some of...one of his... one of his son's grandchildren. The law of hermeneutics, that means the law of Bible interpretation. The first time a word shows up in the Bible, it'll have that meaning and connotation the rest of the Bible. Isn't that amazing? How that Bible is put together to teach me what God says and what he means when he is against something. Sin is a reproach to God and is abominable unto God. Sin is against God, whether anybody in this outfit in here believes or not. Sin always has to be judged. Holy God has to judge sin in my life, your life, and any other person's life that sins. But you can be relieved of that curse and be forgiven through the blood of God's Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm a Gentile dog on my way to heaven, believing in a Jewish man who died on the cross for sinners. I study a Jewish Bible, every writer of the Bible was a Jewish man. Now that's a coinkydicky, isn't it? A Gentile dog. The Jews still believe I'm a dog. They believe you're a dog if you're a Gentile. Isn't that amazing? Yes, it's amazing, but the love of money is the root of all evil, not a root. But you can vote no, you can take a stand, young people are drinking it, older people are drinking it, older people buying it for the young boys and girls. Revival's gonna come to Brunswick first? How can it come to Revival...to Brunswick first and the praying people get their answers to prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
When we're violently sinning against God Almighty? So you can vote no, that's my appeal to you, and I know I've taken a lot of your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that would speak against? State your name for the record, please.
Teresa Caraway. And I'll...I would oppose it. I think that we have enough places that serve alcohol on Sunday. A lot of us go there because it doesn't serve alcohol. It is a family restaurant, and I just don't think it's appropriate.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else that would speak in opposition to this alcohol license? Seeing none, hearing none, are there any that would speak in support of this license? Anyone that'd like to speak in support? Mr. Christensen, if you would like to speak at this time. You do...you do not have to, sir.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine. Okay. You know, I will say that I don't drink. I work for Cracker Barrel, and I'm a representative for Cracker Barrel, the person with the alcohol license. And I did not speak to the man yesterday, it may have been somebody else that spoke to him, but it wasn't me. But I agree with pretty much everything he said. But, you know, the reason Cracker Barrel is pursuing a liquor license is to appeal to those guests that may want to have a glass of wine or a beer with their meal. It's not intended to be a bar or someplace that people go to get drunk. All of our managers are shift leaders, all of our servers are going through alcohol training, so they will know when somebody gets to the point where they may have had too much to drink, and at that point, we take the necessary steps to stop it. But that's all I have to say.
Could you tell me if this is a policy of Cracker Barrel nationwide?
Not nationwide yet, but there...looks like they're going nationwide.
And so is it all of the state of Georgia, is it southeast, can you tell me?
I don't know if all of Georgia right now, I know that Florida, they serve alcohol in Florida, I believe Tennessee, possibly Kentucky, and we're in Georgia now, but I think it's the plan is to go nationwide.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Christensen, or is the Cracker Barrel here, is it a corporate store, is it a franchisee?
They're all corporate stores, we have no franchises.
So there's no local owner here in Glen County?
No, sir.
Or, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit on Chairman's question. Are there, at this particular point in time, any Cracker Barrels in the state of Georgia that are serving alcohol beverages?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to say one other thing, I commend you at the beginning of the session of the prayer to the God of heaven for wisdom. I don't see that enough, and I just want to commend you all for that.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would come up and speak in favor? And seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public comment...Commissioners?
I'm glad to make the motion. I don't drink, my wife doesn't drink. We are against Fran Beach, the way that it's conducted, but the society right, the county through the county offers the privilege to have a license, and it is the one license issued that's entirely revocable at will by the Commission. So that only happened once in my previous term, and I hope it won't happen on this term, but we expect those that serve beer and wine and alcohol to do things appropriately and manage their facilities and their staff and their guests. And just a reminder, it is a gift by the Commission and entirely revocable at will, so that's an extra incentive to do that, so. Make the motion to issue a 2021 alcohol beverage license to William H. Christensen for Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, DBA Cracker Barrel, number 54, 211 Warren Mason Boulevard, Brunswick, Georgia. The license to sell is to sell malt beverages and wines for consumption on premises of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted, William H. Christensen licensee.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Brunson, any other discussion?
No, you know, I...I understand, Cracker Barrel's not a bar, and if you go down the road to Sunny's, they serve beer and wine. I don't see people walking out of there staggering. I...I think it's like Cap said, it's a...it's a right. I personally don't drink because I drive and I'm not...I'm not walking that road. So, you know, I think...I think it's a right that we should give.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is five for, those against? Have one opposed. Motion passes. Our next item is on abandonments, AB 4429. Consider the abandonment of a portion of the unopened alley right of way in Block 13 in the East Beach subdivision as shown on the attached application map, with drainage easement being conveyed to the county over the whole area of abandonment. 1908 Ocean Road, East Beach. That does not look like Mr. Andrews, so hello, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. We had so many community development public hearings, I decided I'd conduct all of them. This is a request for abandonment. As you know, we've discussed earlier this calendar year, county staff is working on bringing y'all forward, an actual county initiated of unused, unopened right-of-ways in East Beach. However, we've had some people that were already in the process and didn't want to wait for that secondary process. And this information was provided to you in your packet. This is the location of the proposed abandonment in the red hatch, and you have already abandoned the gray hatched area. This is the abandonment plat. This is a photograph of the proposed area. The utility comments, there is drainage in the alley, so they recommend maintaining a drainage easement, and the area requested was revised to accommodate that so that no existing utilities were disturbed. There were no public comments as of today, and this is a proposed motion if you choose to use it, and tonight is a public hearing.
Pam, can you go back a picture or two? What...what...what is all the piping?
They're propos...they're using that to show the area in question, but they are proposing a pool.
Go back one more. No, the other way. Didn't...not one more the other way. So is that house next door already in the alley? It's built in the alley?
It has some...it has some things in the alley, the house itself is not built in the alley.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing, so if there is anyone here that would speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Julian Smith again. I would be delighted to speak in favor of this application, and perhaps I should do that later, but what I need to do right now is speak in opposition to the staff report, the staff document in front of you. The subject, according to this staff report, this memorandum, is the abandonment of a portion of an unopened alley. The alley was never unopened. You can find no record that it was not unopened. You can probably find historic photographs, family photographs, taken at the time when these alleys were used for the purpose they were designed for access to the rear of properties, for garbage pickup, for parking, for access to garages and so on. If the alley is not open, it is not because it was unopened, it was because it was closed by private property owners. If you walk through some of the alleys on East Beach, you'll see many of them are open, they are charming, you can walk from one street to another, and people use them, pedestrians use them, people walk their dogs along them. But over the years, in some parts of East Beach, some property owners have put sheds, have put fences, have done landscaping, planted trees and bushes that block public access. So you're...in paragraph C on the first page, the... So you're, in paragraph C on the first page, the county engineer tells us, there is no evidence of the alley having been open for public access. No, he has not found any evidence. I suspect he has not looked for any evidence, nor does he wish to look for any evidence. I have raised this point with the commission. I've raised this point with Mr. Andrews, and still, he keeps bringing before you the same stupid, illogical, dishonest claim. Now, he says potential use in the, I'm sorry, benefit to the public in continuing uses. The public will continue to benefit from the ability to use this alley for access. The public does not use this portion of the alley for access. The property owners to the north and south of the applicants have closed the alley, have taken the alley for their own use. They have landscaping. I'm sure if you walked into the alley from the south, and the people who live in the house next to it will probably say to you, what are you doing on my property? Now, I want to thank the applicant, the barbers, for doing the right thing, and I think you're going to approve their application, not because of what the engineer says, but because in this case, the barbers have bought a property where others have already used a part of the alley. And you will see in your staff report that there's another section of alley that is proposed for abandonment at some later point. If you look at the tax map, and the tax map is not in your package, if you look at the tax map, if you print it out, this map, you will see how much or how little of the alleys in this neighborhood are not open to the public. So what should you do? You should have staff survey which alleys are open, which ones have not been abandoned, but formally abandoned, but have been abandoned by inaction by the county commission, by code enforcement, by others, who have not said to people who have taken county property for their own use, this is illegal. If you want to do this, you need to apply for abandonment. I think this should be straightened out. I've said this before, and I'm saying it again for the benefit of some of the new members of the county commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else that would speak in opposition to this abandonment? Seeing none, hearing none, we will move to those who would speak in favor of this abandonment. Anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this abandonment. Commissioners, back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve the abandonment of the portion of the unopened alley right of way in Block 13 in the East Beach subdivision as shown on the attached application map, with a drainage easement being conveyed to the county over the whole area of abandonment.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rofalski. Any other discussion?
One comment.
Yes, sir.
Putty, I'm always glad to acknowledge when you are correct about things, and East Beach has been a mess forever and ever. Many generations of commissioners and code enforcement and community development have hodgepodge tried to deal with the issues there. What this commission has done and why you see a lot of these coming up has sent the word out, that the, unless it's a dire issue of safety, public safety, the commission is working to get owners to come forth and close these alleys and abandon them so that the issues can be closed, extra tax money can come in, because it's never really been enforced, and you're correct. It's been a problem. It's gone to court, lots of stuff. So in our meetings at the beginning of this year, one of our agendas was to reach out to East Beach and let those owners know to start coming forward and abandoning those properties. That doesn't mean that a property owner on the other side can't come forward and dispute that, and that would be a consideration. I just want to explain that you're correct and what we're doing moving forward. Thank you.
So the language needs to be changed? Is that correct?
I do not agree with Mr. Smith's interpretation of closed versus open, and that's his right to tell you that. I'm perfectly fine with the language of that memo.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Only five more public hearings to go. Land use, ZM 4687, 2306th Street, rezone, consider a request to rezone 2306th Street from the General Residential GR zoning district to the General Commercial GC zoning district. An existing automobile repair garage is located on the subject property, parcel ID 03-12630, Philip Jones and Jennifer Jones, agent for Maggie Jones owner. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this applicant, application is for 2306th Street. They're requesting to rezone this lot from general residential to general commercial. This lot has been general residential since our zoning was enacted in 1966, and the reason to, that they've requested this and that staff is supporting this request is that the lot has been used as an automobile repair garage, so this is bringing the zoning into compliance with how it's actually being used. This is a zoning aerial photograph of the property. This is a closer diagram of the property. Photograph of the property. Planning Commission considered this on July 6th and voted six to zero to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve application, ZM 4687. This slide shows your possible actions along with the recommended motion to approve this application as presented. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would want to speak in opposition to ZM 4687, please come forward, state your name in opposition. Seeing none, hearing none, any that wishes to speak in favor of ZM 4687, please come State your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Philip Jones. I'm the son of the owner who owns the property, and we just want to get the property commercialized so we can abide by the rules and also get the sign up on the building, so.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you.
I move to approve application ZM 4687 as presented.
A second. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Tofterson. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. CUP 4690, St. Simon's Crepe Shop Conditional Use Permit, consider a request for a conditional use permit to operate a restaurant, St. Simon's Crepe Shop, in Village Mixed Use Zoning District, located at 215 Mallory Streets, Suite 5, St. Simon's Island. The property is on VMU, an island preservation design overlay district. Parcel ID 04-04636, Renata, help me out, applicant, J.C. Strava Company, Inc., owner.
Yes, sir. Thank you, commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development, and I apologize, Chairman, I can't help you with that pronunciation. As you're aware, any restaurant or food business in the village does require a conditional use permit. That's why this application is before you. This is the aerial zoning map. They are requesting a conditional use to open a restaurant, and it will be located within the pier Village Market, which includes Sunset Slush, which also received a conditional use permit from you. That's just a map showing where they're located inside. The IPC recommended approval on June 15th to you all to approve this CUP application as submitted. These are your possible motions. I'm available if you have any questions, and this is a public hearing.
Commissioners, anything before we go to the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing for CUP 4690. Any that would speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name. Any opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move to any that would speak in favor of CUP 4690. Any who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you.
I move to approve the proposed conditional use permit as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Is there any other comment? Okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number eight is deferred. We go to item nine, ZM 4693, St. Simon's North End Plan Development District Amendment. Consider a request for an amendment to the St. Simon's North End Plan Development District, ZM 2299, for approximately 941 acres within Frederica Township to reduce the number of dwelling units allowed and allow family estate lots. Subject property includes the following, complete legal descriptions on file with the Community Development Office. It's a portion of 04-12936, 1027 Pike's Bluff Road, portion of 04-13352, 1200 Pike's Bluff Road, portion of 04-13666, 600 Pike's Bluff Drive, portion of 04-00206, 749 Lawrence Road, 04-13068, 159 Harris Lane, 04-13070, 168 Harris Lane, 04-13071, 164 Harris Lane, 04-12730, 147 Harris Lane, St. Simon's Island, Joy Strength and Zach Harris, Hunter McLean, agents for SSI-FR LLC, Rookery Bend LLC, Woodstork Haven LLC, and McKay River Associates LLC, owners and applicants. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. I'm glad you have to read that and not me. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development, and this is a request to amend the existing plan development text in this area, and it's to allow for family estate lots, single-family and multifamily. This is an aerial zoning map of the area. This is approximately 941 acres within Frederica Township to reduce the number of dwelling units allowed and to allow family estate lots. So this is a proposed reduction in density. The proposed amendment will reduce the density to be 300 units, whereas the current PD text allows 725 units. The existing allowed uses would remain and add a new use called family estate. Family estate lots would be large tracts of seven to over 20 acres each, and each tract could have three dwelling units in addition to guesthouse, equestrian facilities, and other accessories, buildings, and amenities. This is the exhibit of the proposed changes. I'm sorry, this is the parcel list. This is the master concept plan. This is the future land use map from the comprehensive plan. The Island Planning Commission voted seven to zero at its June 15th meeting to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve application, ZM 4693, with the condition that aircraft storage use is removed as an allowed use. These are your possible motions, and the agents are available for the applicant, the agents for the applicant are available if you have any questions, and I'm available also. This is a public hearing.
Is the aircraft storage the helicopter that I'm reading in the report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, anything before we go to the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing, so anyone that would speak against ZM 4693, please come forward and state your name in opposition, opposition to ZM 4693.
Once again, I'm Julian Smith. On page two, in the first bullet point, final sentence, you're told that these family estate tracts, each tract could have three dwelling units in addition to guesthouses. How many guesthouses on each tract? So if each one can have three dwelling units in addition to guesthouses, how do we limit the total number of dwelling units to 300? We're told that the proposed density would be 300 units, whereas the currently allowed density is 725 units. I was at the Island Planning Commission meeting when this was discussed, and there was no clarity, although there was a statement by one of the representatives of the applicant, oh, that there would only be this, that, or the other thing. But it was not, it's not laid out, and there's no indication in the staff report that there's been any clarity on that matter. Now let's turn to page four in the staff report. You will see in the minutes for the meeting that I'm the only person who spoke on this issue. I spoke in opposition. No one else did. No one spoke in favor. This is a huge thing that is being asked of you, and yet, you have not heard from the public unless people come out of the work tonight to speak to you about this. And we're told at the bottom of the minutes that at the end of the public hearing, blah, 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 Mr. Torres made a motion, seconded by Ms. Brock, and unanimously adopted to recommend approval of this application with the change from the applicant to remove helicopters and similar aircraft from the list of permitted uses. Helicopters and similar aircraft are not one of the uses identified in the new PD text. What was identified was landing facilities, for instance, a helicopter pad. There was a question, would there be room on some of these lots for private landing strips? That was not answered adequately. The motion was improper to remove helicopters and similar aircraft from the list of permitted uses. That was not what the applicant had agreed to give up, agreed to give up the physical structure for the landing and the storage of vehicles. Now, are you going to tell me that rich folks who arrive at, say, in their private airplanes on St. Simon's, their private jets, or at Brunswick Airport are not going to be allowed to hire? to hire a helicopter to drop them off and then immediately pick up without being, take off without being stored? I think you need to ask some really hard questions tonight of the applicant, applicants. And for some reason, I don't think you're going to do that, so. Listen, I'm going to leave the meeting at this point because I don't want to hear you all discuss this matter. I really don't. And there are some books here for you. I hope that you will take my gift, and if you don't, I hope that perhaps the county clerk or the acting county manager will bring them up and leave them in the county offices. I'll pick them up another day. Thank you.
Anyone else that would come forward to speak in opposition to ZM 4693? Seeing none, hearing none, those that would speak in favor of ZM 4693? Anyone want to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, can we hear from the applicants?
Certainly, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm Joey Strength with Hunter McLean. I'm here with a team available to answer any questions you might have on the application. We would encourage your favorable review and approval of the proposal before you. It reflects a significant reduction in density from the existing plan development text that's in place, and we are available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, one of Mr. Smith's questions was how many dwelling units are you going to put on a 20-acre estate?
The maximum number of dwelling units would be three per estate transaction, excuse me, parcel. He also mentioned that the text itself did not mention anything about the guest house limitation. I would refer you to page four of the PD text, which says, "Guest houses are suites, which cannot be rented separately from the primary dwellings. Provided, however, for family estates, only one of the dwelling units may have a guest house." And so it's not some magical formula that creates an unlimited number of dwelling units. There can be three dwelling units on the parcel, on the estate, one of those could have a guest house.
You know, I commend them for going from 700 units down to 300 units. Now, the other question that I see IPC had was about the helicopters. Is that, is that something that's got to be?
It has been removed from the text that's before you, both for helicopters, and I don't see any reference to any landing strip in the current text.
No, no.
I would say that that was a, that was a mistake in our original application, and it was attempt to be a little too forward-thinking, but that has been pulled back.
You know, like I say, I commend them for lowering the density. I mean, that's, that's what you hear about the island, you know? You take 700 houses versus 300 houses. I wish I could afford 20 acres, but that's another story. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question, just to answer Mr. Smith's earlier question. These lots are not subdivisible.
That's correct.
And I think that would answer the question about, you know, if there were multiple dwellings on them, could they be subdivided and sold off separately? And that's the answer I wanted to hear.
Yes, sir.
Helicopters would not be, would not be prohibited. I've seen more helicopter landings than I care to remember, and you can land one of those suckers on a piece of grass. So I think that, you know, you could bring a helicopter into one of these if you had had the unopened space that would accommodate the rotors, and they could land and take off again, so.
Well, the intent is to follow the county's guidelines in that regard, but not decree anything special.
Yeah, got it.
Well, I think today with the wreck at Frederica and Sea Island Road, and anybody tried to move up and down those roads today, a downzoning is much appreciated, and I know it seems like that there's a give-and-take philosophy, well, we're reducing for you giving us this and that, and yeah, I think that's, that's appropriate concession when you're downzoning this much, and it does have the restrictions in there so that those family estates, our family estates, are not subdivisible. They're not, you know, density, that's, that's where the island faces, and that, that takes a lot of cars off that one road coming down through the middle of St. Simon's, which I keep pounding the podium about, is that we can expand water and sewer, but we can't expand our road capacity much. We might can make some efficiencies. So every reduction in density is going to save the character of the island in the future, and that's where we're at. We're at that tipping point, and that's just, we have zoning ordinances coming forth for discussion, and that's certainly, my goal personally as a Commissioner is to see density reduction so that the character of St. Simon's can be saved. Thank you.
At least just from this Commissioner, I'm delighted that we have an individual like Mr. Ann Schultz, Philip Ann Schultz, as a member of our community who cares about things like this, and I, we are blessed to have him invest his resources here and do it in a very responsible way. And are we ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the proposed zoning as presented and recommended by the IPC.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky. Any other discussion on the matter? All those in favor of ZM 4693, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous, thank you. Thank you all for sitting it out with us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Last but not least, TA 4715, Amendment to Mobile Home Park District. County initiated request to amend Glen County Zoning Ordinance, Section 725-3, to add requirements for the installation of mobile homes and manufactured homes to allow recreational vehicles within mobile home parks, subject to, it says restricts, I don't know what that means.
Restrictions, I apologize.
All right, and for other purposes. Glen County Board of Commissioners or the applicant?
Yes, sir. Again, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you all are aware, it was brought to our attention last year that we did not have a code that allowed for recreational vehicles to be used in mobile home parks with certain restrictions. So you all directed staff to work on that. We got with the county attorney's office and prepared an amendment that accomplishes that. The amendment has gone to both planning commissions for consideration, and they have both recommended unanimously that the Board of Commissioners approve the amendments as presented this evening. I'm available if you have any questions about the details. We discussed it at the work session, and it is a public hearing.
Okay, Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing?
Pam?
Yes, sir.
And Erin and I talked about this yesterday. It says to comply with the flood damage prevention ordinance of Glen County, recreational vehicles must meet at least one of the following requirements established in Glen County ordinance. And it says, first, be on-site for fewer than 180 consecutive days. Next, be ready for highway use at all times, or meet the requirements for new construction as termed, as the term is used in ordinance, stating the ordinance. It says a recreational vehicle is ready for highway use if it is licensed on its wheels or jacking system attached to the site only by QuickConnect utilities, security devices has no permanently attached structures. My problem's 180 days. Erin says it's an "or."
Yes, sir, it is.
But I'm not reading "or" into that until I get down to the other part, because as I stated in the work session, if the best somebody can do, like the young lady, she had a fifth wheel, she can't go in an RV park because you can't stay there for six months, but in a mobile home park, she could put it there as long as the wheels are on it, and she doesn't attach a deck or anything to it, correct?
Correct, and yes, sir, I'll absolutely defer to Attorney Mumford on making sure that wording is, it has to meet one of those three criteria. That was definitely the intent of the proposal.
Well, when Erin and I talked about it, it was, if we remove the 180 days and they're not road-ready, they have to move immediately, correct, Erin?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And that's what this means. So we're not going to walk into the park in Mr. Brunson's area and say, you've got to go in six months.
No, sir.
Now, if they've taken the wheels off, I understand, and if, if it's hooked, if it's got a deck on the side of it, that has to come off. Okay, all right, I'm all right then, thank you.
Anything?
Are these vehicles still have to be tagged and licensed, just like they would if they were on the road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, any other comments before we go to the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing for TA 4715. Any that would come to speak in opposition to TA 4715? Any opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, those that would speak in favor of TA 4715? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve TA 4715. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening.
Where are you going?
Well, I was going to do a few more public hearings, but I figured y'all would get tired of that.
That's enough. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All right, we'll move to the appointments. Item number 43, Consider Appointing One Citizen to Serve on the Coastal Regional Commission, CRC. The term begins July 1, 2021, and ends June 30, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint David C. Bowlin, Jr., who is currently serving.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky to appoint David C. Bowlin, Jr. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Second appointment is Consider Appointing One Citizen to Serve on the Board of Election. The term begins August 16, 2021, and ends August 15, 2025. There are seven names being presented.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Gladys Martin-Lied.
We have a nomination by Commissioner Booker to appoint Gladys Martin-Lied. Do I hear any other nominations?
I nominate Tommy Clark.
We have a nomination by Commissioner Thompson, Tosterson, to nominate Tommy Clark. Any other nominations? All right, those that would vote in favor of Ms. Gladys Martin-Lied, please raise your right hand. That is one, Commissioner Booker. Those that would nominate Tommy Clark, please raise your right hand, and that is five for. So Mr. Tommy Clark is currently serving and will serve again on the Board of Elections. Consider Appointing Four Citizens to Serve on the Life Island Advisory Board. Districts 1, 2, 5, and at-large post 2 have vacancies, of which terms will begin upon appointment and end June 30, 2025. We have five applicants, four are currently serving.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest Mr. Calvin Way, Mr. Gary Altman, Mr. Danny Hickey, Mr. Danny Harvey.
We have a nomination by Commissioner Rofolsky to name the four that are currently serving. Any other nomination? Okay, all in favor of the four currently serving appointees, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Consider Appointing Two Citizens to Serve on the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, the DBHDD Regional Advisory Council. Term begins upon appointment and ends July 31, 2023. We have two names, and we have two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, Janie McMillan and Mark Newman are the only two, and we have two to fill.
Right.
So I move to appoint Janie McMillan and Mark Newman.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky to appoint the two names.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is five for. Mr. Tosterson? Six for, that is unanimous. Consider Appointing One Citizen to Serve on the Georgia Forestry Commission. Term begins upon appointment and ends June 30, 2023. We have one name and one position.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Linda Archibald.
Have a nomination by, motion by Commissioner Rofolsky.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Consider Appointing One Citizen to Serve on the Marshes of Glen Library Board, the MOGL, representing the unincorporated area of the mainland. The term begins upon appointment and ends June 30, 2024. We have one name and one position.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a mistake on the lady's name, I'm sorry. I move to appoint Ellen Kinsick?
Yeah, so we have, we have a motion to nominate Ellen, anybody got it? Yeah, Kinsick. I'm sorry, I apologize.
I am too.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Consider Appointing Two Citizens to Serve on the Marshes of Glen Library Board, the MOGL, representing the at-large seats. The term begins upon appointment and ends June 30, 2024. We have two slots, two, two positions opening, and we have three nominees.
Mr. Chairman?
I reckon that we nominate Peggy Harmon and Nicole Rogers.
Second.
Any other nominations? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky to nominate Peggy Harmon and Nicole Rogers. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Consider Appointing Three Seats to Serve on the Selden Park Advisory Board. Districts 1, 2, and 5 have vacancies, on which terms begin upon appointment and end June 30, 2025. We have three seats and three applicants.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate the three names that are listed here, Ellen Kennedy, Willie Fulton, and Julie Jordan, who's currently serving to be appointed.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Booker and a second by Commissioner Rofolsky to appoint the three, Ellen Kennedy, Willie Fulton, and Julie Jordan. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Consider Appointing One Citizen to Serve on the Glen County Zoning Appeals Board. The term begins August 7, 2021, and ends August 6, 2025. We have one applicant and one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I want to submit Cliff Woodman. Nominate Cliff Woodman.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Fendig, to nominate Cliff Woodman. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that concludes our appointments. Item number 53 under General Business is, we deferred item 52. Item 53 is Consider Approving a Resolution to Establish Selden Park Gen- a resolution to establish Selden Park Gym as a courthouse annex building to be utilized by the State Court of Glen County. Mr. Mumford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to COVID restrictions on distancing, the State Court has requested that the Selden Park Gym be able to be used as a courthouse annex for jury selection and other things as needed. This is very similar to the resolution you adopted last year for Superior Court, which they are using that already for that purpose. So, if adopted, this would just make that an annex, and it would be rescinded by the Board or until COVID restrictions are no longer there.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Glen County Board of Commissioners approve a resolution of Glen County Board of Commissioners establishing Selden Park Gymnasium as a courthouse annex building for the State Court of Glen County and for other purposes.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brunson and a second by Commissioner Booker and Rofalski, I think simultaneously. So, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We added item 54 to the agenda to approve an agreement to film Netflix's Pieces of Her on St. Simon's. Who is presenting? Vote.
Mr. Chairman, I will start off, and I think we have Ms. Nelson back here. So, Ms. Nelson, the back is with Netflix. She can answer some of the questions about logistics. I think she's been working with the merchants to get their thoughts and consideration of it. But in short, they would like to film in the Village area next week, on July 20th and 21st. Matthew, can you scroll down to the exhibit, please? And there's a scope of work back there. For that, there's a $15,000 fee that would be given to Glen County. And all this stuff that's been scrolled through is a lot of boilerplate legal leaves, but the crux of it is in the exhibit, as far as the scope, what they want to do, the times, the hours, the dates. There we go. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Nelson to kind of give you the logistics and updates on where she's at with merchants.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, we've been contacting-
Ms. Nelson, if you would, state your full name for the record, please.
Rachel Nelson.
Thank you.
So, we've been spending the last couple of weeks talking to businesses. So far, we haven't had anyone object. There are a few people who aren't comfortable signing the signature page or just haven't had time to get back to us. I know it's a really busy time for everyone down here right now, but everyone seems to be pretty excited about having the possibility of their business film, their signage displayed on TV. So, and if there's a few businesses that have business hours that we're going to be affecting, and we've got inconvenience agreements in the works for all of those, we've got about $10,000 that we've been dividing between the businesses that are being most affected. I've got some more signatures here that I haven't got a chance to send y'all yet. It's about including the verbals that I have, about 87% of the businesses. The others just haven't responded at all. What we're asking to do is to, on the 20th, between 10:00 a.m. and, or I'm sorry, 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. between, on Mallory, between Kingsway and Park, we'd like to do a closure, allowing residents to pass through as needed on Poplar Avenue, and pedestrians will allow all the businesses in that area to remain open. We are in the process of working out a deal with Frosty's Grill and Shake to relocate customer parking to that parking lot so that the customers of the businesses right there on Mallory can park there. On the 21st, we're going to be keeping all of our activities before 10:00 a.m. We do want to close Mallory Street between Kingsway and the pier and close all that parking to the public, but we will be clear of the area by 10:00 a.m. There's only a handful of businesses who are open before 10:00 a.m., and those are the ones that we're negotiating payment as compensation for their business hours being thrown off. I've got some overheads of just our requests from Public Works. I don't know how much you guys want to go into that right now.
I think that'd be helpful, if you could.
Okay. So...
We're good, Ms. Nelson. You go ahead.
We just want to do a, let's see, I'll start with the 20th. We just want to have some barricades set up on Mallory Street at Park Avenue, at, on Poplar, at Neptune, and Oak. We're basically going to show the actress riding her bike down Poplar Avenue from Oak towards Mallory Street, taking a left and then turning down to Kingsway. So, just barricades on all the streets in the, in between those points. And we'd like a couple of police officers to assist us with the traffic redirect. We would, we're proposing to just detour down Park Avenue to turn onto Oak Street to get back to Kingsway, just detouring Mallory Street in that section. Then on the 21st, we want to have barricades set up on Mallory Street at Kingsway, at Lord Avenue, on Beachview Drive, and on Butler, just kind of closing the section of Mallory Street from Kingsway to the pier for vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic during this time. We would also like to request two police officers to assist us with this. And since all the businesses will be closed, we won't really need to redirect any traffic because it won't be open in that area.
Commissioners, any questions?
Are you allowed to tell us what the storyline is?
Yeah, it's actually based on a book called Pieces of Her. So, if you want to know the whole story, you can read the book. But in short, it's a-
Would you mind reading it to us tonight while we're here, please?
I didn't bring my copy with me. I'm not a good, I'm not a great outloud reader either, so that might get tedious. But basically, it's about a girl about my age. She moved to New York to kind of pursue her dreams. She wanted, you know, to kind of be in show business or something along those lines, and her mother got cancer. And so, she came back home to a small town outside of Savannah, which Netflix doesn't like Tybee, so they like St. Simon's better, apparently, for that look. She came back to take care of her mother, and on her birthday, they're having lunch, and some events transpire. A shooter comes, the ex-boyfriend of a girl that happens to be at the same diner they're at, and the girl's mother ends up kind of saving her and taking down the shooter. So, through these events, things come to light about her mother's past that she didn't know about, and sort of her struggle that was basically all kind of... Her mother had, her mother changed her life in order to protect her daughter, essentially, without spoiling the ending, because I want you guys to all go watch it.
It sounds intriguing.
It's a suspense.
Could I trade you my copy of Condominium for a copy of your book?
Remind me to bring one down next time.
Commissioners, any questions?
Oh, no, I've got a few. I was saying, want to welcome you to our community.
Extra points, Commissioner Fendig, for brevity.
Want to welcome you to the community and look forward to having you on. These Commissioners know that when I first took office, the number-one challenge that I had to them was to revive our interest and invite to the film industry, to Glen County and all of the islands. So, we're glad to have you here. Thank you for working with the community. And just a reminder that we still have a job, Commissioners, and that is to pass an ordinance similar to Jekyll that expedites a lot of these issues that film companies need to have. So, just, Mr. Attorney, keep that on the radar for a get-together. But thank you.
Thank you for having us. My mother is actually the head of the Savannah Film Office, and so, I've gotten to see that process. They've done a lot, they've made a lot of changes there to expedite the process. I definitely would love to give you some feedback if you're interested, you know, at another time, obviously. But it's been great to come down here. I'm from Savannah, so, you know, it's kind of like a little mini-vacation for me without going too far from home.
Great, thank you.
All right, Commissioners?
What we need, a motion to approve the-
Yes, sir.
Contract, or I don't see anything in the document.
That's correct. Motion to approve the location agreement as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve?
The location agreement.
The location agreement?
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rofalski. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to it. I would like to take a moment to thank the mayor for joining us tonight, and I hope he enjoyed the entertainment. To the rest that are in the room, thank you for coming. Thank you for being part of our process. I believe we have items for executive session. I will need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
Have a motion to go into executive session for matters of personnel. Commissioner Rofalski made the motion. Commissioner Tosterson seconded. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, we stand in recess for executive session. All right, we stand in recess for executive session.
...